Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. This proceeding is being broadcast on channel thirty-five, and the exact broadcast times can be found by contacting channel thirty-five. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Katz.
Present.
Commissioner Lehr.
Present.
President McLean Hill.
Uh, present.
Commissioner McGraw. Vice President Neiman Brady.
Present.
For board members, a quorum is present. Madam President.
Um, thank you. Uh, I did want to open this meeting with a, with some very brief remarks. We are, uh, moving into the, uh, holiday season and closing off what has, uh, been an interesting, um, year and certainly for me, a interesting, um, last few weeks. Um, so what I'd like to say is this, um, throughout my tenure on the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, uh, I've always strived to conduct myself in the process of carrying out the city's business on behalf of the people of Los Angeles with a high degree of integrity, professionalism, and public policy leadership. The emphasis of my work has been to position our city's major utility to fully engage its diverse communities with the overarching goal of meeting our residents' needs and helping to prepare our residents for their clean energy future. I want to say thank you to all of the people who've reached out to me over the last several days, especially those of you who work at this department. As we head into Thanksgiving holiday, you are among the things that I will appreciate most. Um, with that, I'd like to open up the floor for general public comment.
Public comment is open. There are no general public comments, but we have a commenter for item fifteen. Public comment is now closed at this time.
Thank you, and we'll call item fifteen special so that we can take a comment at that time on that item. Uh, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Madam President and board members. Uh, I thought I had a very brief report. It seems it's gotten a little bit longer, but I'll try to make, do it quickly. So first of all, over the weekend, I think everyone's aware of the, uh, the fire that occurred under the ten freeway that's caused a closure. It was on Saturday morning. Um, we, I want to commend our crews that, that were on hand. Uh, the power system responded. They had to de-energize lines, uh, replace a pole, uh, several spans of wire, and wash the conductors that had a lot of soot would have shorted out. And so they remained on scene during and after the fire, and, uh, and the city appreciates their assistance. Water system crews were also there to ensure there's adequate water supply and then actually increase water pressure in the area fighting the fire. So I want to thank our crews for their work as well as our own emergency management folks who did a great job of making sure that we had good information flow in the department and that we participated with the city's, uh, partially activated EOC. Uh, I did issue a bulletin, uh, Sunday evening, uh, to our employees about traffic and about the traffic concerns. That's been an evolving issue, uh, as, as the cities and Caltrans and, and Metro have jointly worked to develop traffic flow plans. Um, uh, at the mayor's request, uh, there's a recommendation for as many people, not just city staff, and anyone who can telecommute that has to travel through that area to please do so to lessen the burden on traffic. Um, this morning, um, the governor announced that they had enough assessment to know they were not going to have to rebuild the freeway, but it would be a three-to-five-week closure, uh, while they brace underneath it. Um, I was there yesterday with a tour with, uh, a number of, uh, city managers, and it's, it's pretty interesting when you see a close hand how, how bad the fire was and the damage that it did. But they do expect to be up and running in five weeks on the outside. And so, uh, we have asked our employees and their managers to, particularly those that are affected by that area of commuting, to, uh, to continue our telecommuting and, uh, make sure that's offered where, where it makes sense. Uh, right after our last board meeting, we had, um, the Society of Women Engineers National Conference at the Convention Center. Uh, it was very well attended. Our goal was to, uh, you know, promote opportunity and recruit more women into our workforce. Uh, a number of our employees, uh, were on-site not just to attend, but also to help us host, uh, one of the largest, most prominent booths at the convention hall. Our outreach included, uh, digital informational screens. Uh, we had a lounge, uh, for onsite interviews and exchange of information, and we did a virtual reality space for touring a power station. Uh, throughout the conference, we had videos playing of our own, uh, employees, uh, talking about the jobs that they do. Uh, we conducted onsite interviews and made conditional offers of employment, and some of those were, uh, accepted, which is great. And, uh, we have about forty more candidates who are scheduled for interviews in the near future. So that was a great success. And I'd like to thank, uh, all the staff that put that together, particularly the women from the Department of Water and Power, who, uh, went there not only to enjoy the event, but also to work hard on behalf of this agency. Uh, to further celebrate, uh, Hispanic Heritage Month, De Coloris Presente, the art exhibit debuted last month. Uh, unfortunately, it was out of town, so I missed that, but I appreciate, uh, President McLean Hill and, uh, Senior AG Greg Reed, uh, and I know Arum and others that were there that spoke and introduced that, uh, that, um, exhibit. Uh, there was a special reception, uh, last November ninth for employees and community members. It featured, uh, artists that had artwork there, as well as a curator Joey Anderson in Summer Banal, and music by, uh, Adika Idule. Uh, that exhibit will remain up through the end of the calendar year, and it's open for members of the public to come and enjoy it as well during our business hours. Um, I'd like to recognize Joe Romano and his team, uh, this week at the American Public Power Association's Customer Connections Conference. Our employee newsletter Contact, which many of you remember, the hard copy, now it's all done virtually online, is honored with an Excellence in Public Power Communications Award, uh, for the print and digital category. And Contact's been around since nineteen seventy-two as an informal journal of, uh, accomplishments going out of the department, uh, sharing stories that spotlight some of our internal initiatives and feature employees doing, uh, doing the work that they do and truly trying to educate all of our employees and staff about, uh, about the things the department's interested in and doing and the accomplishments and work of different groups, particularly some groups that people don't understand what they do on a regular basis, so way to daylight a lot of really important things that are going on. Uh, so in two thousand twenty-two, Contact went completely digital, and, uh, we were able to put more on the, uh, more information in it that way as well. So congratulations to Communications and Corporate Strategy Division, and particularly the folks, the writers, uh, graphic designers, photographers, and the AV techs, and the Contact editor who, uh, coordinated this. And it's really nice to receive this award and get this recognition. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Simon, uh, who has a brief, uh, highlight on, uh, the Navajo Mutual Aid Training that just completed. Go ahead, Simon.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Marty. Um, for a third year in a row, um, from October sixteenth to November ninth, uh, LA DWP crews participated in mutual aid training exercise with the Navajo Tribal Utility Authority to connect families of the Navajo Nation to the electric grid for the first time. Uh, DWP crews included personnel from the Power Transmission and Distribution, Power Construction and Maintenance, uh, Fleet and Aviation Services, and the Office of Emergency Management. Um, our crews gained valuable experience, uh, during their stay and work at the Navajo Nation, working in challenging conditions and isolated areas, uh, a ten-hour workday to finish these projects. In total, the crew completed, uh, electrical wiring and panel installations on forty-five residences. Our line crew specifically, uh, installed, uh, more than three hundred two poles. Uh, that's about seven miles of, uh, conductor, uh, wiring. Um, and these were, uh, done in partnership with the Navajo Tribal Utility Authority. Uh, this, uh, was a true demonstration of collaboration between LA DWP and the, uh, Navajo Tribal Utility Authority. Um, uh, it's important to note that, uh, all, uh, DWP crew members volunteered for, uh, to participate in this project. In fact, we had more volunteers than the people we were able to send. Um, I would like to recognize and thank each and every, um, LA DWP personnel and crew that worked for four weeks to positively, positively impact the lives and livelihoods of families. Uh, families who have applied to, uh, and waited to get electricity service for forty years, and in some cases, up to fifty-five years. Um, something that we take for granted here, um, and, and many parts of the nation. Uh, and it was a very touching and a very impactful moment, uh, not only for those families, but for LA DWP employees as well in part of this exercise. As a show of support, we were fortunate to have, uh, Commissioner McGraw, uh, joining us last week, uh, with the Power System Leadership Team, um, in visiting the crew as they were working and participating in an appreciation event that was organized by the, uh, Navajo Tribal Utility Authority and the community members. Uh, hearing the testimonials and remarks, uh, by the various family members was extremely touching, and all of us came back with, uh, a really new perspective and insight about the work we do and the impact we have on people's lives. This was, uh, a real proud moment for LA DWP and specifically for Power System and what we do in, uh, really touching people's lives and improving, uh, their quality of life. Uh, our audiovisual, uh, team, including our communication team, put together a brief, uh, uh, slide deck here, and, uh, I think it's playing, and we can keep on playing the, uh, slides until the end. But I would like to thank everyone who participated in this effort. Um, there would be more communication with the Navajo, uh, Tribe Utility Authority in the future on how we can do this better, but, um, uh, this was, uh, by all means, a very successful effort. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Simon. And, uh, I know Christian McGraw's not here, but to echo, uh, what he said, we were in the state water project tour over the weekend with Christian Katz as well. He made the comment that, uh, the, the crews had gotten power down one particular area, but we did not actually hook up one or two particular homes, and, and, uh, and that was going to be saved for next year, and apparently our guy said, "That's not going to do." And he said they put in a number of poles, I want to say seventy poles in one day, the last day, um, to get those people energized, and so it was quite impressive work by our crews, and we appreciate the, what they've done, and appreciate Commissioner McGraw for getting, getting there to be part of that. Um, I'd like to, uh, the slide's playing, that's great. Thank you, so thank you, Simon. Um, I'd like to announce that Ensmo Collins, uh, his leadership was recognized on the state level. He, uh, recently was elected the Board Chair of the California Urban Water Agencies. It's a group of the, the eleven largest water agencies in California. And, uh, they actually represent, uh, water service to about seventy-plus percent of Californians. And, uh, the group gets together, um, sometimes with some unlikely folks that would be in the same room, uh, over the years, but, uh, they collaborate very well together, the, the heads of these agencies to, uh, help, uh, further, uh, water policy in the state, work closely with, uh, regulatory elected officials in the governor's office in making sure that, uh, the needs and the interests of, uh, urban water users are met, and also try to improve the lives of Californians overall. So, Ensmo, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll be successful in that. And lastly, I'd like to turn it over to Ensmo. Um, on J two, filed item, uh, in the board package, you have filed item recognition of our two thousand twenty-three Recycled Water Customer of the Year. Uh, I'd like to turn it over to Ensmo to actually recognize those people publicly here at the board.
Great, thank you, Marty. Good morning, Commissioners. So since two thousand and thirteen, LA DWP has awarded the Recycled Water Customer of the Year Award to one of its recycled water customers to recognize their achievements in using recycled water and for their support of water conservation and sustainability for the city. This item, that's, uh, like Marty mentioned, item J two before you, is to recommend that the Board of Water and Power Commissioners recognize LA Unified School District's Sonia Sotomayor Arts and Sciences Magnet School as a two thousand twenty-three Recycled Water Customer of the Year. Sotomayor Magnet is being recognized for their dedication to the use of recycled water, using nearly a hundred percent recycled water to irrigate their four acres, and for their innovative use of recycled water as part of their science curriculum as well. They have what they call the farm, where they, they teach, uh, science there, which I think is pretty cool. Um, so with that, I'm pleased to, uh, uh, pleased for you to join me in congratulating them for their efforts. Uh, today with us, we have a few members from LAUSD and also from the school. I'd like to introduce some, and if they can step up to their podium as well so they can receive the award. We have Christos Krasilian, who is LAUSD's Chief Sustainability Manager. We also have, uh, Leo Angulo, who is the school principal of Sonia Sotomayor. And in the audience, we also have Jennifer Valdivia, who is the Public Information Officer. So with this, I'm going to go up over there and give you your reward, and if you have any words you want to share, that'll be appreciated.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. I'm Leonel Angulo. I'm the proud principal of Sotomayor Magnet. Thank you for having me here. Uh, we want to just go ahead and say thank you for partnering with us for the last thirteen years. We have used, uh, recycled water, uh, at our farm. I invite you, we have cows, we got pigs, we got, we grow everything there. So whenever you want to come by, you're welcome to come, uh, to Mr. Flores's farm. Our students are growing, uh, all kinds of fruit and vegetables, and, you know, you want to come and pet the pigs, um, come on down.
Where are you located?
I am, I'm in Glassell Park, so off of San Fernando Road. Really, really close? Well, you don't have to cross the ten, so that's a good thing. Um, so know that we are here, and we are very proud to partner with everybody in LA DWP. Thank you.
So, Madam President, uh, Commissioners, to the leadership and to our water systems, thank you so much. Um, I want to share that as the Chief of Sustainability Officer for LA Unified School District, I'm very proud to be here accepting this award because it means a lot to our school district. We have four school sites right now that were accepting recycled water, and there's four more that we have in planning and development, and we're ready to be able to turn those over as well. We're capturing over eighteen thousand square foot, uh, eighteen thousand, a hundred cubic feet acres of, uh, of, uh, of water on, on those four sites, and with a plan that we're going to be able to capture a lot more in the, in the, in the next few years once we complete the rest of them. What I want to share is that in two thousand fourteen, we set up a goal to minimize our water consumption by twenty percent. Well, you know, I just want to share today that we're actually reduced consumption by thirty percent, and it's with your support, it's with your collaboration, so I want to thank you greatly for that, and certainly to avoid using a lot of the portable water and being able to, to use recycled water for irrigating our fields. So thank you, and it's a great honor to be with you here and accepting this award. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
May I comment on that?
Oh, absolutely. Um, I just want to say congratulations, um, to LAUSD and to the school in particular. Um, it's wonderful to hear about the farm. I'll have to visit sometime, but it was also great to see in the board packet the beautiful native landscaping that you've done there. We know that access to nature is really important to, um, children's health and well-being, and so I, I love to see that development at the school, and just wanted to congratulate you on the award and your leadership. And I also loved, uh, reading that you're going to be integrating recycled water potentially into the curriculum. There's so much potential for the physical school to also be a teaching and learning environment. So just wonderful work, and thank you very much.
So, I'd like to make it.
I know Commissioner Lehr, but you have no idea how great, how like thrilled we are to have you here. Commissioner Lehr, uh, does not let an occasion go by without discussing the importance of partnering with LAUSD, so we're really happy you're here today.
Yes, really happy to be here. Yes, one of the largest landowners in the city of Los Angeles, important to note. Um, and, uh, yes, I've been to the campus and I've seen, um, the cows, and, uh, I have been involved in LA River Outreach that you have hosted, uh, with the community and have worked with students. And I have a story I tell often about how, when we were asking some of the students what they would like to see, what kind of experience they would like to have in some of the river projects that, that was in the future. One of them said, "I really would like to have a place where nobody's cellphone works." And so we went through this whole conversation about if the cellphone doesn't work, uh, how can you make the cellphone not work? Said, she said, "Well, in our school, you know, I think it's about respecting one another." And I think maybe we could have special colored hats. And basically, when you're in that group, you can't get the phone, you can't use your phone, and you can't, you know, you have to be, you have to be in a different modality. I mean, that was the kind of student that was participating. So congratulations, because you really do give them a lot of, uh, sort of, uh, platform for really meaningful learning and conversations, and so congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to say that it is always incredibly important and gratifying to see how our policies, uh, really show up on the ground. And we, you know, sitting in this room have to, um, remain focused on the vast resources that we have and the way that we can magnify our impact by collaborating and partnering with, um, other agencies and other, you know, service providers and other stakeholders in the community. And LAUSD has been a terrific partner. We really appreciate you being here, and I am desperate to now come by and see the pigs.
All of you are invited. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam President, that's the conclusion of my report. Unless there's any questions, thank you very much.
Are there any comments on the General Manager's Report? Nope. Um, I'd simply like to make one observation about, uh, the conference, uh, the shift conference, and that is, uh, or suite conference, that is, having been there, um, was, as always, really excited and gratified to see the level of support from our male executives as well. Uh, that's the thing about LA DWP, the men roll hard with the women, and they show up in numbers, and so it was great to be in the hospitality suite to see that level of representation. And I know that the women engineers really appreciate that, so I just wanted to make that comment. Um, and I think, uh, also to congratulate Ensmo. Uh, and, uh, with that, we will move to, uh, introducing motions for future consideration.
Yes, thank you. Um, so we will be introducing a motion on an upcoming, uh, board meeting, um, related to the Chatsworth Reservoir. And, uh, it will be one in which, um, uh, we will be exploring, uh, supporting the goals of, uh, the native species protection and enhancement, uh, work that the LA, um, has been, um, advancing through its biodiversity goals. And, um, the thought is that it is the only nature preserve in the city of Los Angeles, and, um, there are special and, uh, unique habitat, uh, there for flora and fauna and endangered species and species of special concern that we want to be very mindful for, but that we also want, um, to be a, a location for broader use of the city in some capacity and access. And so this motion would be for the teams to explore, um, the, the, uh, funding, um, whether it's federal, state, or local grants or other funding, um, to fund some sort of Chatsworth management plan. And, uh, we will no doubt need assistance through, uh, several parts of the city to make this happen, but we'll be putting forth a motion, um, and, uh, I applaud, uh, our fellow Commissioners, both Reed and Mia, for their work in, uh, supporting this.
Uh, terrific. I look forward to seeing that and also, um, to hearing from additional stakeholders around Chatsworth. So I know that that is, uh, something that Commissioner Katz, uh, is, uh, looking at helping to facilitate, and, uh, it is an important piece of property, so, uh, I look forward to that motion on an upcoming agenda. Camden, any comments right here?
Yes, thank you. My name is Camden Collins. I'm the Deputy Executive Director for the Office of Public Accountability, and Dr. Pickle wants you to know he's not off celebrating National Pickle Day, although it is National Pickle Day, he's home with a cold. So, um, I just couldn't pass that up. Uh, it's, um, a false reason for his absence. But we would like to note our support for Agenda Items Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, and Thirteen. Will be available for questions on any other items board members would like to discuss in detail. And that is all.
Thank you so much for that. Appreciate it. Um, any comments or impact statements from our neighborhood councils?
No community impact statements or formal positions were filed by any neighborhood councils on any of the items on today's agenda.
Okay, perfect. Uh, then, um, we have, uh, consideration of, uh, items, um, that, uh, to be approved. Uh, Item L one is being deferred at this time, uh, at the request of the COO. And Item fifteen, we have a specific public comment on that item, so we'll take that item special. Are there any other items that board members would like to hear special? All right, then is there a motion with respect to L two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and, uh, eighteen? I think I may need to recuse from nineteen, is that correct? Okay.
Yep.
So Items L two, oh, the items that I've just previously called out, is there a motion?
Um, motion to approve the items as described.
Seconded, I would you please call the roll.
Commissioner Katz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lehr.
Aye.
President McLean Hill.
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady.
Aye.
Four eyes, motion adopted.
All right.
And do you want to do nineteen now and step out, or?
Uh, I'll just, we just go through the, well, let's see where we are. Well, we'll go through the agenda, and we'll take up fifteen and nineteen at the same time. Um, so that is great. Can we now move to, um, management reports? Beginning with facilities.
Yes, and I'll turn it over to Arum to introduce the team, take the lead on the report.
We, we have a presentation on, uh, facilities plan, and then Tom Desmet, uh, has a PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll follow up with questions and answers.
And while you're coming to the, uh, table, I simply want to, uh, acknowledge the incredible work and my extreme delight at the fountains and the water. Um, walking up to the building this morning was absolutely extraordinary. There was a rainbow in the water. Uh, a couple of, uh, last week, when we had the artist's reception and members of the public at the building, the fountains were in full display and the lights were on. And I know that I gush over this building all the time, but I do consider it one of the most remarkable and significant public holdings of the city of LA. It's not just a building, it's an asset that belongs to the public, and it's simply delightful to see it being presented again fully. Um, so congratulations and thank you to your entire team and to all of the people who are both here and those who have left, because this has been a long time coming to make this happen. So, um, please, your presentation.
Thank you, that has certainly been a labor of love. There's too many groups to try to acknowledge right here, but there will be a write-up coming forth on it, you know, um, and we'll be able to fully acknowledge all the groups that were involved in getting the fountains back up, and the, uh, commissioning of the, the fountains and the moat is still in progress. So you're going to see, see some more improvements as, as we move forward, but in the meantime, you can enjoy the, the moat and the fountains in their full glory with the new lighting system and everything else. So, thank you for acknowledging that. Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Tom Desmet, Director of Facility Services. I'm here today to provide you with a high-level view of some of the unique facility plans in the works designed to improve the way we serve both our customers and our employees. The first, uh, the first one is LA Connect. To improve the way that DWP conducts business with its customers, LA Connect brings many public-facing counters, including water and power new business, encroachments, and key accounts into one location. The proposed, oh, this is not, there it is. The proposed location is at two twenty-one North Figaro Street, also known as Fig Plaza. This will create a shared campus with some of LA City's other public counters, building and safety and planning, which are already located in the Fig Plaza campus. Along with some system and backend improvements, this facility will be designed to make our customers feel comfortable in an open and welcoming waiting area and seated semi-private plan review stations. Customers will enjoy an easy-to-use scheduling system that will enhance communication, so they will always know the status of their project and reduce the amount of time spent at our location. And a concierge will be on-site to walk customers through every step of the process. Sorry. Okay, so moving on, LA Connect e-Hub. These electric vehicle charging hubs will be located throughout the city of Los Angeles. These electric vehicle charging hubs will be located throughout the city of Los Angeles and along some of Southland's busiest travel corridors. They're open to the public, but uniquely benefit L.A. D.W.P. customers by integrating their home service rates into all of the e-Hub locations. Customers can simply log into their account, and they would pay what they would pay if they plugged their car into a home charger, and the charging fees will be reflected on their D.W.P. bill. These hubs will utilize 350-kilowatt fast chargers, each one capable of charging a single vehicle to 80% in 10 minutes or two vehicles to 80% in 20 minutes, just enough time to run a quick errand, grab a cup of coffee, or take a quick break in our comfortable Each full-service location will be easily identifiable with L.A. Connect e-Hub branding. Will have security, a lounge, a patio, and restrooms. Solar canopies with battery storage will benefit nearby high-density housing and critical facilities during outages, and the facilities can act as cooling centers for the community during heatwave events. The next initiative is L.A. Work Hub. We all know that telework has become an integral part of the modern work culture. Although telework can provide employees with a better work-life balance, keeping employees connected to our organizational culture can be a challenge. L.A. Work Hubs will benefit our employees and work groups by offering flexible spaces that can be reserved by individuals or groups through hoteling software. The hubs will be situated throughout the city of L.A., so employees who don't have the ideal home office setup can reserve a workstation in a hub location that is convenient for them. Employees will have the advantages of connectivity to the D.W.P. network and the ability to scan, print, and copy, which can be challenging from a home Managers and supervisors can hold group meetings, retreats, and training by reserving one of the various-sized rooms for their group. Every D.W.P. employee who uses a hub can also enjoy the various collaborative work areas and lounge-like networking areas to connect with other employees, fostering team-building and connectivity to the organization. This work atmosphere and amenities, such as the available coffee and snacks, will make at-work days very fulfilling for our employees. The convertible meeting rooms can also be used for disaster operations centers during emergencies, when long commutes can be the most challenging. And the last initiative that I'm going to speak on today will be mini-yards. We all know moving around the city can be quite an investment in time. Too much time that should be spent fixing a water main break, restoring power, or making a location safe is spent by the crews sitting in traffic. In order for D.W.P. to provide customers with service that is more timely, we have to decentralize our district operations. The mini-yard concept will enable us to do this without the need to build additional large district yards that require substantial land purchases and building construction. These yards will be strategically placed in areas that we do not have in an existing facility and where response times historically have been the greatest. These will be approximately one acre in size, will either be a vacant land lot or contain an industrial-type building. Each site will be secure and will be used to stage one to two crews with essential equipment and tools. Resupply will occur through mobile distribution channels, where the supervisor can place an order through an automated system or app, and delivery can be made by bringing all materials and dropshipping a container or pod that contains everything they need. Any facilities brought to the vacant yards will be portable to enable the crews to redeploy to areas in higher demand. Supervisors can handle their office duties at a nearby L.A. Work Hub from a mobile office or from home. And then all this, the support functions for these crews still exist, such as vehicle maintenance. It's still available at existing larger district facilities that we already have in service now. With this, I conclude my report, and we'll entertain any questions.
Any questions, comments?
Comment, I'm definitely excited to see this, especially this last strategic initiative, thinking, you know, about how to reduce response time and really make sure that our field operations are where they need to be in the city. I was wondering for the employee hub areas and also the electric vehicle charging hubs, whether you have any maps or list of locations that you could share with us? If you don't have it in front of you, that's fine. You could send it by email or?
I don't have the maps in front of me, and I, the intent is to do a deeper dive into this at future board meetings, but right now it's a high-level overview. We do have, for the, the e-hubs, the charging locations, we do have two locations being planned to be opened in the fourth quarter of 2024.
And where are those?
One's going to be in the valley, in the Van Nuys area or around the city area. And then the other one will be down on South L.A., on Normandy.
And you said that you're prioritizing areas where there's higher density and people may not have access to home charging?
Yes, correct. Especially in the initial rollout of this. And then some, some of these locations, when I say a full-service yard that'll have all the amenities that I mentioned, there's going to be some locations that are going to be added to, let's say, a church or a shopping center, where some of the L.A. e-Hub chargers will be placed. It won't be a full-service location, but it'll still have the same accessibility and the same rate structure that the full-service locations do.
And then, sorry, one more question. With the kind of dual-use and emergency operations, I was also glad to hear that thinking and sort of the potential for these employee hubs to be a little bit of resilience hubs as well, is that, are all of the imagined uses internal D.W.P. emergency ops, or are we also thinking about community kind of service during emergencies?
So they can be deployed as community rooms and cooling centers as well. So both the e-Hub and the L.A. Connect centers can be converted to cooling centers during, you know, major heatwave events, because we've found in the past that those are very valuable to our residents. So, yes, they could, they could be converted for both those purposes. The L.A. Connect locations, we do have the initial phase of those. We have seven locations identified already. Two of them are in the downtown area. One is in, two are in the valley, one is in Eagle Rock, one's in South LA, and one's the West Side. So we're trying to spread them out the best we can. Those are all D.W.P. owned facilities that will be, you know, repurposed for that. And then, at the same time, we're looking into utilizing either new purchased facilities or other, other type district, excuse me, D.W.P. facilities for that purpose.
And I have a question. In the first type, typology you mentioned, did I understand that you could go there to sort of get support in terms of permitting and facilitating projects, you know, delivery?
For the L.A. Connect, for basically our public interface counters, which is the power new business, water new business, encroachment permits, and, and the key accounts. Where right now, they have locations that are spread all over the place, and they have different systems for, you know, getting the project moving and getting the permits done, things of that nature. The idea is to make kind of pattern after what the city's been doing for years with a one-stop, one-call-to-city-hall kind of concept. And we want to do that not only with the water and power public interface counters, but also make a campus that also combines L.A. City's public interface counters into one location.
Great. Good collaboration.
Anything else? Any other questions? I'd just like to both commend the planning that is going, that is ongoing around this range of issues, both as it relates to how we think about increasing our capacity and our performance with field office operations. I mean, it's, you know, thinking less about how we can take over huge plots of land and really how we better leverage and utilize things that we already have is pretty significant. I'm really interested in and happy to see the thinking that's going on around what the future of work looks like and how telecommuting, the implications of that, and our need to think through how we support that workforce and the impact on our actual, again, real estate needs. The department, and then, of course, the L.A. Connect is a really fantastic model and leaning in heavily in terms of how we better present a better public-serving face to the public and make it more convenient. I, I do want to acknowledge how significant all of these, all of this planning and all these strategies are, what significant departures they are from the status quo. And, you know, that's not a small thing for an agency of this size that's been doing things in a particular way for a very, very long time. Also, to your question about where some of these hubs are located, you know, the department, you mentioned potentially using other properties and E.V. charging stations on land that we don't own, but could collaborate with, you know, if they're willing, partners out in the community, had the opportunity just this weekend to visit eight churches in South L.A. And one church in particular continues to stand out, serves a migrant population on the corner of Crenshaw and Adams. It's R.L.I. It's a three-acre site. And we don't often think about the amount of real estate in the hands of some of these really significant institutions in our community. And these sites are very interested in working with us to facilitate the build-out of charging locations and also solar infrastructure in underserved communities. So I know that the department is looking at these kinds of collaborations, and, and I'm very excited about what we can achieve. And it's similar, Commissioner Lehrer, to your focus on schools and school sites.
Yes.
Now, I mean, we know the big stuff that we can do and that we're on track to do in order to facilitate this transition. It's, the success of it now will be about how we execute the details and the little stuff and how we work with our community, with our customers, with our residents on every single little piece of it. And to see so much of it coming together all at the same time, I think, I think about Chatsworth in a similar way. It is looking at all of the pieces and all of the details around the pieces that will make this a success. And so really, really, really good work here. Thank you for presenting it at even this level, and I really look forward to seeing the more detailed rollout of some of these plans as we start to move forward pretty aggressively over the next, you know, weeks, months, and years.
I have one more comment on that. To, to the President's point about kind of an integrated approach, at our previous board meeting, we had a presentation on D.W.P.'s biodiversity plans, and one of the targets this year is to identify locations in D.W.P. property where we might add native plants and access to nature for communities, and would love to connect with you and learn more and see if there's potential with some of these E.V. charging sites to also work with the water side of the house and have any, you know, even if it's small, like a demonstration garden of native plants that could educate people about the turf rebate program, for example, while they're waiting for their car to be charged, I think there might be some nice opportunity for taking an integrated approach. So let's, let's chat. And thank you very much. This was wonderful.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the forward-thinking board and executive staff that we have here that, you know, enables us to do this kind of thing. So appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And thank you for bringing that up. That was, one of the goals this year is to more formalize that biodiversity program so it does touch all these kind of projects, so we're not operating in a small little silo, but really spreading it across everything that we do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Terrific. Thank you so much. And let's now go to M. Oh, that was it. On the management reports, we're on filed items. Any questions or comments with respect to any of the filed items? Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second?
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Aye.
President McLean-Hill?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion adopted.
Terrific. We'll now call item L15, and we have a public comment on that item.
Hi, Madam President and Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Lauren Vaughn and the Metabolic Studio. My name's Kelly Meduski. I'm the Project Manager for the Bending the River Back to the City project. We just, we just finished in October the completion of the in-river portion of the construction project. We're very excited about that, and we're about to be starting and focusing all of our attention on the well and water treatment on our site. So super excited, and we'll be planning to begin delivering water to the State Historic Park in 2025. So on behalf of Lauren, I wanted to express our appreciation to Marty Adams and his staff and assistants for the continued support for the project from the beginning. And we also wanted to thank Mia Lehrer for her interest and support of this project over the years. And with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. If not, thank you very much.
No, thank you. I very much appreciate your being here. And is Mr. Gonzalez in the room?
Yes, he is.
Thank you. Would you mind just very briefly walking us through the presentation on this project?
It would be my pleasure.
Thank you.
As Kelly mentioned, it's been a longstanding partnership with Metabolic, and despite the fact that there's many words on this slide, I want to emphasize kind of the key remarks you made earlier about partnership, collaboration. The way Metabolic sees it is that they've hit, to some extent, almost a finish line on a project that's been in place for over 15 years in working with the city. What you see here is an evolution of the project and the board action specifically, starting back in 2017, where there was conceptions of the project being a water wheel. It evolved in 2021. It changed in scope, given the feedback from the state and federal officials, given the significance of the project. It's been reduced to a rubber dam. Now, fast forward to today, Metabolic, again, thinking about the comments that we've made as a city, the impact it would have, and again, trying to preserve that celebration of water and what the river represents to us. They've reduced the scope of the project, again, one more time. It's going to be an inlet structure coupled with a diversion treatment system. In my mind, as overseeing the city's recycled water system here at D.W.P., they've taken our feedback about trying to divert water in a way that allows us to treat it and still use it for offsetting potable supplies. That's what we want to do. So they've taken our feedback. Again, they've revised the project's scope. They've adjusted it in a way that meets all of our objectives. And what is here before you is an agreement between the city and Metabolic. That would be L.A. Sanitation and Environment, D.W.P., and Metabolic on an agreement of roles and responsibilities. The key thing for D.W.P. is preserving our water right, which we maintained. There is no financial obligation with the agreement per se. L.A. San is going to play a big role as it pertains to the maintenance and operation of this facility. And Metabolic is, as you know, going to take care of the construction, the design, the engineering, and just the oversight of the entire project. So that's what this complicated slide is intending to show here. This is a little bit more detail specifically about the water right, the city's obligation. Again, the key point being is that we preserved our water right. There is no financial obligation on behalf of D.W.P. towards this project, but we do fully support what they intend or are trying to achieve as a result of the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehrer. Would you have any comments on this?
No, it's a, it's a wonderful project, and for some of you who haven't been there, I might suggest that, that a tour... suggest that a tour is really interesting and it's, you know, complicated in so many ways, because getting that water out of, you know, the river bottom and then lifting it and taking it under the rail to actually, you know, it's just a proof of concept, everything we're talking about, recycling water. And it's just wonderful to see and to think that, you know, 30, 40, 50 years from now, it's a legacy that especially Metabolic is leaving behind. But in approving this and in all the work that Marty and others have done on the project, that, you know, this park, and if you haven't been there in a while for an event, it's just verdant and, you know, so much going on there and so much programming that comes out of also Metabolic Studios on the site that is really enlivens the place above and beyond. And there is a fabulous farmer's market. And if you want to know how many different kinds of mushrooms you could be eating, you could go to the farmer's market on Thursday, starting at 3 o'clock. And those are all the kinds of programs that are being sort of supported on the part of the LA State Historic Partners, but many, many people, including Metabolic Studios, who've been participating and really advocating for the community to be active and to actually, some of them make a living as, I think they're called park ambassadors, if I'm not wrong, but something like that. It's wonderful.
Thank you. I only invited Commissioner Lair to provide more texture, as certainly our water rights are of preeminent concern.
Yes.
But yet, this is, again, another example of how, in the pursuit of our primary business, we can make a significant difference, contribute to and provide leadership around how we preserve and promote environmental and sustainability and community interest as well. So really, thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation.
One request. It seems like you may have seen drawings or some mark-up. You know, both you and Commissioner Lair have expressed that there's a little bit of complexity to this project. So would you please follow up with the Commission with some diagrams?
Sure.
We should have those generally in the presentations.
Will do.
And that would be helpful, but it sounds like the description you gave is sufficient for us to go forward at this time.
Yeah. I would second that. It'd be great to see. But I also just want to comment on this project. I think it really is an important example of how the city can work across departments, Bureau of Engineering and LA SAN and DWP together. And it's also an example of how we can really work across disciplines, you know, solving these kind of challenges that we're facing. It's not just an engineering problem. And bringing artists into this and creating this kind of inspiring work, I think it's very important to our ability to solve the kind of region-wide challenges that we're solving. And last, I just want to comment in case folks didn't catch it in the LA Times piece about this project. But I found it really fascinating and inspiring that in the removal of concrete at the base of the river, there were seeds that actually were then still able to grow and sprout after having been buried for so long. And I think that's such a powerful metaphor for all of us to consider in the kind of work that we're doing of restoring this river in our city and, you know, building these kind of partnerships. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So Farmer's Market Thursday at 3:00?
Bill trip. Would you please -- oh, is there a motion to approve item 15?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second?
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lair?
Aye.
President McLean Hill?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion adopted?
We've come to the close of our agenda. We've got item L-19, for which I will not be present, after which we will move into a closed session. And so, I will not be back to this portion of the meeting. It is 11:15, so we are running really well from an open session perspective. I understand we have a pretty extensive closed session. Does reconvening at 11:30 work for folks?
I think so.
I am departing at 12:15.
Okay, terrific. Then...
Are we going to the conference room or back here?
For a closed session.
For a closed session? Your pleasure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions on this, or shall we do a motion to approve for 19?
Yeah.
I'll put forward the motion to approve item 19.
What is the conference?
This is COP28, the Major Climate Summit.
And who else is going from Los Angeles?
Lots of different people. I know UCLA sends a delegation from the law school. I'm sure there are other folks from the city attending. I don't know if anyone else from DWP is attending. Marty, do we have anyone?
No.
But there will be other Los Angeles representatives.
Is Nancy Sutcliffe going?
No, she's not. She would consider, but she's not able to go unless something has changed. So I think there might be other Representatives of Mayor's Office going, but I'm not sure who.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Do we have a second?
It's my second, and I think LA's representation at an venue and an event like this speaks volumes to what we're trying to accomplish from a climate perspective.
Agreed. I think Los Angeles and California have stepped up and provided leadership in areas where sometimes we don't have an integrated national approach on this. So I'm glad to see this leadership from our Board President. I think we can take the vote, Commission staff.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lair?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion adopted?
Okay. I believe that concludes open session, and we will now close the meeting and move to closed session.
Can I -- yes, can I?
May I use words?
The board shall recess into closed session to consider the items listed on Agenda Item M. The board will publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or extension thereof of every member present in accordance with California Government Code 54957.1. All right.